Good evening, everyone. This is Robert Stevenson. I'm the chairman of the Southwick Collin Grandville School District. I'm looking to bring to order our meeting for Monday, October 21st. Can I get a motion entered into the meeting?
So.
Can I get a show of hands entered into the meeting? Erin, let the record show the motion passes five zero zero. Um, can I get everyone to stand for the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Hence, the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. We have our consent agenda. We've got minutes from lack, oh, from six four. We've got some home education proposals. Anybody have any issues on those? Right. Warrants. We've got one warrant in the little bucket there. If you guys can make sure we sign off on that, we'll take care of that. Uh, Superintendent Willard, do you have any correspondence tonight?
Uh, no, I do not, because I do have a, a donation from, uh, the, it says, Dear Superintendent Willard in School Committee, this letter serves as recognition and acknowledgement that we received a donation of school supplies with an estimated value of a hundred and fifteen dollars for the educational purposes that was in school. This was donated by the American Legion Post number three three eight in Southwick, and we just like to thank them for their support and their contributions. That's good. Perfect.
Very much. All right. Hey, Donnie. Uh, you're up.
Okay, so first out on the list is Connections is planning on facilitations for sixth and eighth graders throughout the year. SAD is starting to work on their drone driving PSAs for prom. Uh, last Wednesday, people showed their support to breast cancer by wearing pink and donating, donating to the cause, which happened in a pink bracelet in return. Members of the high school band did a great job at the farm parade on last Saturday, and we're lucky enough to have some great weather. The counseling department is taking a group of students to a college for a Western High tomorrow, and then another one at St. Andrews on Wednesday night. Both fairs will happen in colleges, um, just at different times, which is more accessible. There will also be a college prep night Zoom for juniors within, on Thursday night. On the NHS convention, it will be one week, from the 29th, where we're conducting nineteen juniors. Um, afterwards, you'll have snacks and refreshments. People have a series of dressing, pay assemblies on October 30th. Each grade will have separate assemblies, um, like they did last year. Um, we're having set quarterly class meets now, in addition to those that we had on an ad-meat basis. Our first quarterly meeting will be on November 4th. Where it's closed on November 1st, student council will be sponsoring a popo social on that day to celebrate the end of the best time. There will be a pep rally at the end of November, right before things getting ready, and a series of spirit leading up to it. The specific activities, um, have not been announced yet. Um, John will be putting on their fall pride, well, Angry Years, for the end of November. For sports, uh, cross country has, at Stanley Park, um, they're ending season, uh, on the 27th, starting in, like, sometimes, but, the Dick Atkinson Invitational and state championships, we follow that in November. Um, girls soccer is supposed to be Western Mass tournament quarterfinal. They're also second place in class B of Western Mass. Phil Happy is, the varsity is also second in Western Mass Class B. Um, unified basketball team is halfway through their season, season, and they're scoring an average of fifty five points per game. And in golf, Joey Melk, who qualified from, for the, from, no, for the Western Mass individual tournament for golf, and then Josh Rome, almost said he lost last year, but he's very close. That's all I have.
Super. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, all right, uh, yeah, sure, you know, strategic plan and data.
And data, you don't, don't let the file where it is, it's just what I carry around. You already blanked it. But, if you have any deeper questions, you can talk there. I didn't remember it. Didn't know I have such an audience for this particular presentation, but, um, but here we go. Um, so, when we're looking at the regional school data, there is so much to look at, seven through twelve, re-grade levels that are four grade levels that have MCAS testing data, plus AP data, uh, kind of, I already, we have discovered, uh, absolutely correlates with the outcomes on MCAS. So we, we focus, teachers focus on that in real time, but for the purposes of this presentation, it's not as relevant as needed. Um, so this is just a general overview of where we are as, as requested, that we wanted to keep this broad, but, questions or deeper conversations that anyone wants to have are welcome up at the regional schools. And as a matter of fact, I would say this year probably, uh, more than most, we've had some really productive and, I would argue, exciting discussions about data and PLCs and, uh, teachers have been digging deep and talking about what next steps they're taking, so, um, I think everybody gets excited the more we talk about what, what we're doing. Um, overall, in terms of regional school accountability, uh, student achievement, um, for ELA at the high school, we're up, uh, point seven, and non-high school, we're down four. Um, for math, we're up two point two, stayed exactly the same for non-high school. So non-high school is a combination of middle school, when we're talking about accountability. And for science, uh, we're up in high school for five point five and non-high school, uh, zero point four. In terms of our student growth percentile, our high school's at forty six point six percent in ELA and sixty percent in math, and non-high school's forty one and forty one, both ELA and math. So that's just kind of a general snapshot of where we are in terms of accountability. Um, this is, our first slide is grade ten, um, uh, putting ELA, uh, math and science side by side. Um, some of the things we're celebrating is, is generally students perform better than the state. If you look at what our real goal is, right, is getting everyone to meet or exceed, uh, expectations. Uh, partially meeting means we're on our way. Um, so in terms of those categories, in terms of English, uh, we are above the state. Um, in terms of math, we're above the state in tenth grade. Um, in science, we're barely below the state in, in terms of that. In terms of, of specific items, uh, for ELA, um, in tenth grade, conventions and writing seem to be a thing we continue to work on, but we're not significantly below, we're barely. Um, in math, we have five items that we were, uh, below, two I would say were significant, uh, points below the state average, and those are related to, uh, equations of a line meeting a given slope and which solution, um, of an equation contains an error. So students had to select the error based on something that was already given. Um, we had two items that were well above related to circles and two items that were nicely above related to, uh, using models and real world solutions. And I feel like that's a, that's a pretty big line of students are connecting what they're doing in the classroom with, uh, real world solutions. So those are, those are good ones to be above the state and.
And we're not only just above the state, but in two of those three, we're well over fifty percent of the students are meeting or exceeding.
Yep.
Which I'm assuming is a good result.
That's a good result. And if you think about, um, because we're all in one school and seventh grade data doesn't, it's, it's interesting because in terms of accountability, a cohort needs to be in the same building for over a year before you're looking at it in a meaningful way. Um, so we're really looking at seventh, eighth grade data, data as benchmark data to get us to the tenth grade. So we look at that and say, what do we need to do to have different results or better results in tenth grade? And as you know, the tenth grade, that's the, that's the high stakes, that's the one tied to the diploma. So in the trajectory of seven to ten, uh, that's where the regional school teachers are really looking at, how are we getting to the next place? So the tenth grade data is our flagship data right now.
Right now.
Right now. And I mean, and it should be. Constitution for next month. Um, so in terms of our eighth grade data, um, uh, here you have it side by side. Um, we are not as in a good situation in terms of being above the state. Um, what in eighth grade, really, all of our below the state, um, items are, are connected to essay writing. Um, and that also, I'm going to just throw in, that's also a factor in seventh grade writing. Um, and in eighth grade, a lot of our below, um, below the state items are related to expressions and equations. Um, and one of the conversations that has come up is that, and that's not a new thing, that we've noticed that trend over time. Um, the expressions and equations unit is, is at the end of the year. And eighth graders at the end of the year are tested in math, English, science, I-ready, and now civics as well. So eighth graders spend from, um, from April break till the end of the year, testing almost every other week. So what we need to do about that, I'm not sure, but we've correlated that unit um, and that time of year as something we need to, to look at in terms of curriculum. Um, in terms of seventh grade, uh, this year was a little different from our trends, but we, we are below the state, uh, more than we'd like to be in ELA, um, a little tiny bit in math, um, writing, uh, and writing again is a factor in ELA or appears to be, and, uh, other items about using information in context is what emerged this particular year. Um, but we're celebrating that students are demonstrating and strengthening some of the geometry items. Um, and that this is some baseline data relative to ELA that we have. Um, and we are addressing it. We are addressing it. I'll talk about in a few minutes about what are the things that we're already doing, uh, or we anticipated, uh, with this data. Um, in terms of advanced placement, a lot of celebrations there, but a hundred percent of students taking AP pre-calculus got a three or higher, ninety percent in US history got a three or higher, and seventy five percent taking US government, uh, got a three or higher. And in the last two years, we've seen a, a seventy percent increase in the number of students enrolled in these courses. Um, that is, that's a big deal.
Excellent. We would expect that once we got rid of the honors level classes on, right?
Yeah, we expected that in the first year, but what is, what's the nice piece is that it's continued. It wasn't just a first year. Um, last, uh, one course, that's an example, as we went from barely a section of AP Lang to two sections, and this year we're offering three sections. Um, so that's, that's significant. Um, and other courses growing as well, different, to different various varying degrees. Um, Erin, could you jump ahead to, um, so, so the teachers engaged in their PLCs in, uh, deep dive on item analysis of the data? And one of the, one of the, uh, questions as part of that was, um, they used a data protocol and what they, they were asked, what are the celebrations? What are the positive things? So, uh, the slide, this is like, if you could bump ahead to the new slide, Erin. Uh, teacher celebrations from the data analysis, these are what teachers had to say about what they observed. And that's in your PowerPoint. I won't necessarily read them all, uh, but this was their observations about what they thought was great from their perspective. Um, which I think is important. Um, in terms of our accountability data, which, uh, as you may know, is, is factor, all, all new number of factors are, are MCAS, uh, achievement and, and growth percentile are only two factors. Attendance data, the number of students in eleventh and twelfth grade taking advanced courses, our dropout data, our chronic absenteeism, all of those things converge in a formula, and we get an overall accountability classification. We are classified as not requiring assistance or intervention. That puts us right in the middle of the continuum, which makes sense, because when we look at all of our other data, we tend to find ourselves right at state average, just above, just below. Um, we've made moderate progress toward our targets as set by last year's accountability. And our cumulative progress is forty seven percent last year, where we were at forty nine percent. So we're still in the same, we're not, we didn't move too much one way or the other. We didn't move too much. Um, so Erin, if you could advance to the what we are doing slide, or Steve, I'm sorry. Um, so what we're doing is, um, in terms of addressing some of the concerns, is we've shifted, um, our focus is really on building back some structures in, in school that allow, that create an environment where students can access the learning. Um, so eliminating things that are known to be distractions or known to, uh, limit student engagement. And I don't think it's a surprise to anyone, based on all our communications, that, uh, as a school, we're hitting hard on cell phones. Um, uh, student sign-out and passing, um, and of course bullying, paralegalism, discrimination, all things that would be known distractors to student engagement. Um, we have developed school-wide teacher goals around that work. Um, and the, the goals start with me, and I'm holding assistant principals accountable, to holding the teachers accountable, and teachers are holding students accountable. And we, we discussed at the opening of the year, a, and a commitment to doing that so that we can all get back on the same page and create an environment that is conducive, most conducive to learn. I think we were feeling like we had gravitated away with that, away from that with so many distractions. Um, and I will say that already, even though it seemed, you know, we talked about it at the end of last year and going into the summer, shouldn't go in this direction? Is it too elementary, like telling everybody, okay, we're gonna all follow the same rules and hold each other accountable, like, like we're all just learning it? Uh, but what we've found is, I think it's refreshing to be working together as a team across the school on the same thing. So everybody knows that we're in it together, and someone's saying, well, Mr. So-and-so doesn't make me do it. We know that that's not true, because everyone's having everyone do it. Um, and for the most part so far, I mean, we're only a quarter, barely a quarter in, um, you can see and feel the difference um, in our hallways in particular. Um, so also what we're doing is what I just mentioned about in the PLCs, analyze, doing the item analysis of the data, um, a protocol, and teachers had identified some problems of practice, and they have come up with, or worked together to develop four to six week intervention plans that they're already in the cycle of, I believe, already in the cycle of, um, to address some of the deficits in the item analysis. Um, so that's where we are with that. Um, and I believe that some, in all the PLCs, um, they also didn't just look at this year's data, but they looked at trends over the last three to four years, so post, post COVID. And where we are going, what we're, what we're looking at, our initiative, like folks focusing on some of the basics relative to school routines and structures and building that environment that's conducive to learning. Um, we've kind of got two phases this year, just establishing the routines and really everything in. Um, and then next, next year, as we move forward, really kind of gathering the data on the engagement, the cognitive engagement piece. So one is building the structure, two is looking at the engagement. Um, and that's through our targeted programs, you know, the anti-bullying, uh, programming that we're doing, establishing our clear guidelines, um, and working to improve our, uh, academic, our interventions and outcomes relative to those. Um, additionally, which, as part of the strategic plan, we're all aware that we are launching or implementing curriculum, new curriculum in many of our areas, uh, our core content areas, and so, um, that obviously we are anticipating. Those, those high-quality instructional materials were selected uh, based on, by, by a council through a rigorous process, based on, uh, best practices and evidence-based practices, and so and, and rooted in student engagement and power and dignity. So we believe that coupled with the changes in environment or the shifts in environment will lead to improved student outcomes going forward. Um, any question about any of that? Okay. All right, so site strategic plan, already mentioned some things, we've revision, uh, relative to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Uh, we've made some revisions to our handbook and clarified, uh, clarified some processes, but also defined some terms. Um, and we have brought some of that, some of those changes to the handbook into, uh, explicit learning for students as part of extended homerooms, uh, where we talk explicitly what the terms mean um, and what the outcomes, you know, some of the expected outcomes relative to our handbook. Um, as I mentioned, our updated cellphone practices, uh, bringing some, some changes to high school practices, uh, to create that more, uh, environment, more for music to learning. We have, we are partnered with Northeastern Center for the Safety and Sport. They came last June and did some initial, um, school assemblies, two grades at a time. Um, we took the feedback and the data, observed data and collected data from those, uh, assemblies and have built a program for a second set of assemblies, which I mentioned are coming next week. Um, from there, we have scheduled in November, they're gonna, we're gonna choose student leaders to participate in a two-day training, which is not dissimilar from, um, the Connections training that, that Connections students receive, but this comes through, added through a different lens, which is through, um, athletics. Um, and then we will continue our partnership with them and talk about some community engagement as we look toward this, a later part of the school year. So that's a plan for that. Um, our Connections program is expanding its reach, uh, with some goals about becoming more involved uh, on a wider scale in the community. Um, they're also extending their peer lessons to seventh grade, where it used to be just they delivered to, uh, eighth grade. Now we're looking at extending to seventh grade and also sixth grade. Um, additionally, uh, Connections students are getting more involved in peer, uh, mediation or peer support when, uh, when younger students are struggling with, uh, certain kinds of issues. Uh, the counselor will arrange, uh, uh, Connections students to be part of that conversation, so students are getting it from their peers. Um, as you know, we are, uh, engaged, we've begun our MIAF process this year, the accreditation process. So one of our, uh, some of the work that we're doing as part of our plan is phase one, which is conducting, um, a self-reflective process and writing a report. Uh, MIAF will be visiting us on April 8th and 9th. To, our report will be complete, and they will come and visit our school, uh, to, to look for evidence about what we said is the case. Um, and then to give us feedback to develop an improvement plan, which will be phase two of the process. We've entered, we've returned, uh, we brought home, we're bringing homerooms back to, um, high school. We've been using extended homeroom as a place to, uh, provide explicit education around some of our initiatives, specifically, uh, anti-bullying education, social emotional learning education, um, and some other things, uh, our handbook initiatives and things like that, um, so far, so good. Uh, and we're, we're expanding some of our positive behavior strategies that teachers are utilizing in classrooms, um, as part of tier one, but also as part of, uh, the work we're doing in extended homerooms, both in middle school and high school. And in the middle school, we, uh, we have re-initiated, uh, the idea of community meeting or team meeting for all students. Um, the middle school model of the eighties and nine, that was born in the nineteen's and nineteen nineties, included, you know, the idea of teaming for teachers, but also on a regular basis, that team of teachers brought all the students together and did team building or different explicit instruction. So, so we've brought back that time, um, periodically, like approximately every other week, but not exactly. Uh, where there's an extended period where the middle school teachers bring their team together and work on a specific skill um, connected to a team-building activity. So the conversation might be, uh, we're talking about perseverance, um, and we're gonna go do this activity, and so what do you think perseverance might look like? Right? And then you go do the activity, and we're looking for evidence of, of that while we're doing the activity. Then you can come back and we can say, you know, what did, what did you see, or where did you, where did you see people persevering? And then you can talk about, so what would this look like in the hallway or in the classroom or throughout your week? And then in the following, uh, uh, community meeting time or team meeting time, uh, teachers will celebrate students who have exemplified that skill over the course of two weeks or three weeks, whatever the, the piece was. So, um, so that is something we're excited about, and I think the team leaders have been excited about, um, about planning those things. Um, in our guaranteed and viable curriculum, I'm gonna segue, that we adopted, we adopted Wayfinder, and it's turning out to have some really excellent resources there. And so in that community meeting, teachers can now go to Wayfinder for some of those ideas, lessons, things that they want to do. But on a broader scale, um, our counseling department is spearheading rolling out the launch of, of the Wayfinder curriculum. The counseling department has also adopted the NEPA pathway program, which we used to use in NAMAs, and we've moved to NEPA pathways um, for comprehensive college and career support. Uh, you know that we are, uh, in the implementation phase for grade seven and eight of Open Science in our science curriculum, and in our high school, uh, we are in the launch phase, which means they're doing, high school doing a couple of units, whereas middle school is, is fully, uh, rolling out. Um, we are in those similar places with Odell, which is our English, uh, curriculum for nine through twelve. Yale, which is our, uh, English curriculum for seven, eight. And we are initiating the HQIM process for selecting community help and wellness curriculum, which, um, maybe looking primarily for a key curriculum, utilizing some of our help, but with some resources. But that will come out of, uh, that HQIM process. Uh, instructional technology, uh, one of the, two areas of focus where we are right now is with our Innovation Career Pathways Program, we're looking to, as we roll it out, you know, the cohort, we need to enhance each course that's coming. So it's a ninth grade, the tenth grade, tenth grade below. So, uh, making the next course that students are going to take, um, meet the requirements or what students need as part of the pathway program. So that is, uh, as part of the plan for instructional technology. We also have, um, dedicated a specific lab for creative courses in the, in the library. So our animation course, our film studies course, other courses that want to do creative projects that require, um, you know, audio, visual, and things. So we dedicated a space to that rather than just having an open lab that, that anyone can use anytime for any reason. It's dedicated for these purposes, um, the creative, uh, technology purposes. And lastly, but certainly most importantly, or arguably most importantly, is engaged learning. And all of the things, uh, relative to our TEID initiatives, relative to our guaranteed and viable curriculum initiative, right, relative to our instructional technology, uh, uh, initiatives, really all come down to engaged learning. Um, so I won't necessarily go through all that point by point, um, but, but that's, that's where it is. Those are all filtering, those are all the things we're doing to ultimately get to for greater, um, cognitive engagement in, in classrooms and student-centered, uh, learning. Two of the things that I didn't mention before, but that would be part of that, is what's the next step in terms of culturally responsive practice? It's, you know, we can't just stop at, you know, reading books about diversity, or we have books about students or about peoples of other cultures. That kind of gets us to multiculturalism a little bit. But how do we get to the deeper ideas of teaching for the students in front of us? The universal, universal design, right? So I'm using the assets of the students in my classroom, um, who are here right now. So that's sort of the next phase. I don't think we're, we're diving deep into that this school year, but as part of the life of the strategic plan, that will be the place we're going with, uh, continuing our cultural responsive practice. And, uh, job-invited, uh, peer learning walks, getting, so the administration is, is doing some, uh, peer learning walks. And really what we're talking about is the look fours in our new curriculum. So, um, how are we holding people accountable to making the shifts that come with new curriculum? We can set, we can say we've, we've adopted this, you know, student-centered curriculum, um, but if we don't keep, uh, looking at it and talking about it, what, what we know happens is people fall back into the way they've always done it. So developing a list of look fours that, that, uh, evaluators or anyone doing a walk through the look for in the classroom helps us uh, recognize what's happening that's great, and what we need to do next in order to implement the curriculum with fidelity. And so, that's what I found. Does anybody have any questions about?
So basically, it's been very easy going versus, like, or so, like, here.
It's been so easy, Mr. Student. No, actually, in, 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 in all honesty, uh, it feels really good at the regional school right now. We, we have had a positive, um, opening overall, um, and I, there's, I can ask some regional school folks.
I'm not hearing a lot of, no way, so.
But, um, so we, now, now we're in a, let's, let's sustain that, right, you know, there's.
So you said it's palpable in the hallways with the cellphone changes in what way?
The hallways are quieter. The hallways are quieter. Compared to, compared to last school year, you can walk through the hallways and it looks different.
Sounds like, I'm gonna break protocol here, second to, like, everybody with a dog here from the high school. How are the classes? Are we, are, are these kids, are the little pouches working?
Uh, so there's middle school and high school, middle school.
Middle school has the underpouches, the high school has the little drop boxes, right here.
Yep. Um.
Are you getting a train of kids that aren't following?
We're getting in the middle school a train of students who, I forgot my underpouch today. So, uh, some days it's a handful of students, some days like twenty. And so we're making phone calls home to let parents know, did you, did your child really forget to be on their couch? And can you partner with us to ensure that they are, so far, we have not, in that. So far, we have not enacted or we haven't charged anyone saying, oh, we lost it. It's not necessarily the same child that forgets it four days now. That number is like really small. It's it's a good day.
So there's a concerted effort.
Yeah, um but we're working, we're actually.
They're plotting, okay, okay, who's better getting more?
And we're actually having the conversations with middle school team leaders, uh looking at what are the pieces that aren't working great right now or what we see, the holes, and and what can we do next step? Uh one idea is uh putting the slots that the high school have in the middle school classrooms as well and the under pouch goes in the slot. Um as a as a kind of. And and it seems like it would be, well, then what's the point? But in middle school, they don't, they don't have the luxury of having the hall, the phone in the hallway during passing. So that would be the reason to keep the pouch, but in the classroom to hold some of the other things.
I don't know if pouches in high school are big enough to hold the under pouch.
Oh, we tried it, yeah. So that's just one, that's just one thing we're we're trying. So we're we're just constantly evaluating and saying, what can we do next?
No, I mean, just to everybody who is involved in enforcing the new cell phone policy and limiting of distractions. Thank you for all being on board and supporting each other because I know it is so much easier when everybody's on the same page. Um and it's nice to hear that it feels different. Um and yeah, I get we're not quite even done with quarter one, but um keep it up. It's it's important. It's awesome and thank you.
Thank you for your productive work.
Go to your other question.
It's too good.
Sure, mercy is excuse for me. All right, you're good. Pat, you're gonna bring out your big thing.
Oh.
I'll look back to this. All right, uh Superintendent Willard, give me reports for us tonight.
I had none, but I got an email at three fifty two today. So I just wanted to share this because I know we've had some concerns. We've I asked the um executive director at uh C Tech to tell me about the bus situation for our C Tech, W T A and Smith buses, because our kids are on for a long time. So I, he said, this is what we have so far and we continue to review and possibly revamp the routes for career and technical education students in the S T G R S D. Um to let you know, the Talendon, Granville students for C Tech, W T A and Smith are on the buses longer than the Southwick students. They have two buses picking up out in Talendon, the Granville area, and they meet up at the Granville Town Hall for six oh five A M. So bus twenty seven transfers her students onto bus sixteen and he takes the students down to the powder mill lot. He arrives to the powder mill lot uh between six twenty five and six thirty. Uh bus twenty seven does start picking kids up at five thirty five A M in Talendon. And then the other buses start picking up students for C Tech, W T A and Smith around six A M and they all meet at the powder mill lot for between six twenty five and six thirty. The reason they all have to be there between six twenty five and six thirty is because the W T A bus and the Smith bus leave uh powder mill at six thirty A M. The C Tech bus does not leave that early because school doesn't actually start until seven thirty. So they do, he said they do stay there until um six forty to six forty three. And um they're not quite sure what to do about it and sort of talked to her about maybe going a different ways or they don't get to school quite so early, but because the uh Smith kids and the W T A kids have to be there for six thirty and that's where they all meet up. It's kind of like, y'all have to be there for six thirty. So I did talk to him about possibly adding another bus. He's not sure if either transportation uh manager Lynch would recommend one yet. He said he would look like some time to look further into the routes with Banner Green Donovan. Um it would cost us money if we did add um another route, I mean another bus. Um but that is what he has given to me so far.
So it sounds like the issue is that from Talendon, Granville, there are no direct buses to where they're going and that the time suck is the fact that they have to come down here to Southwick.
Because all the C Tech bus, the W T A bus and the Smith bus all pick up the kids at the powder mill school.
Right. If we could avoid that pickup for the Talendon to the Granville kids to Smith and Westfield.
No, we couldn't do it.
Because the buses pick up kids that don't shoot.
All schools.
That's that that's the problem.
Yeah, they're not, one bus isn't driving around saying, oh, I'm taking the ten kids who go to Smith's. There. So if you're in Talendon, you're picking up all the vocational kids that go to white schools, they're going to. Right. And then they get on their trans, well, Granville kids and Pelican's transfer at uh Granville Town Hall at six oh five, then they come down here.
So they have one bus that comes here?
Yes.
And then on that bus is gonna have C Tech kids and Smith boat and Westfield tech.
Yes, and then when they get here, they separate onto three buses. One goes to W T A, one goes to Smith, one goes to C Tech.
Okay.
So.
That's what I can give you a frame.
There are buses though that are, but they have to be here. So they've gotta be here for six twenty five to six thirty because on the Southwick buses, there may be somebody for Smith's boat. Or for Westfield tech and they've gotta be there by six thirty.
Yeah, here that they differentiate among the three schools.
I didn't know that.
Well, the nice thing would be is that this is the type of explanation and trans and transparency that should have been provided to the district prior to the school year starting. And I'm not a big fan of the issues that I've heard about about the people over at C Tech or L P V A blaming this situation on the failure of the district of providing letters or something in in a timely manner.
Correct.
So I'm hoping that the director of L P V A addressed wherever that came from to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Perfect.
The the three school split that happens here in Southwick, is this the first year that that has happened or has that always happened?
I would assume, but you know what happens when you assume.
Yeah.
So um I'm not, I'm going to say I don't know, but I would imagine that this has been typical practice because I don't think this is anything that.
Well, it, I mean, folks up there, we're used to getting on the bus early, but I'm pretty sure that there is a half hour difference this year compared to last year. So I'm curious as to what's happening differently this year than the last year.
The bus twenty seven is in the Talendon, Granville area, bus sixteen is in Talendon, Granville area, bus two is Southwick, bus four is Southwick, bus five is Southwick, bus forty four is Southwick. I don't know. I don't know. Do you have any specific questions you'd like me to forward to him? You can send me an email.
All buses in Southwick that were all getting on one bus that goes over to C Tech.
Right.
Yeah, which makes sense.
Right.
Yeah.
You don't wanna have four buses.
Right, it's it's geographically, they know we are a very difficult full distance transport. But the one good thing is we have drivers where other two doesn't get very nothing.
Eric has told us that's over that, that's no drive.
None. Good guys.
The kids are sitting around for a little while more, waiting to get to those schools.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's an answer.
So sorry you had it written, just had it pop up.
It's all, it's all good. Um all right, policies. We don't have anything for tonight. We've got our first policy in November, uh Superintendent Willard, we are on to action items.
Okay, move to approve consent agenda items as listed above, recommended, so much.
Can I get a show of hands to approve that motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes five zero zero.
Move to accept the donation of school supplies from Woodland School in the amount of one hundred and fifteen dollars from American Legion Post three three eight in Southwick, recommended, so much.
Second.
Conversation on this. What are you showing here? Have approved the motion. Aaron, let the record show the motion passes five zero zero.
Move to approve the powder mill site strategic plan for twenty four, twenty five, recommended, so much.
Second.
Comments, questions? You did a good job last week or last night. Uh can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes five zero zero. All right, subcommittees, negotiation, we are in negotiation with which all three units at this point, I don't know the teachers, what is coming up soon. We're in mediation with Paris and it looks like we're gonna have to start mediation with the customer group. Uh finance, we are having a meeting soon. Next week, this week, next week, there we go, so.
What was this, channel?
November fourth.
I think we got, I think we got, I think we got an email, somebody sent out uh outlook confirmations.
We went to expenditures to date?
Sure, you can, yeah.
Okay, that's what I think would be good.
Yeah, 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 where are we at? Uh okay, I'll feedback, Eric is not here. I do not have a corporation meeting and we've got our answer from the director over there, so that's good. Uh policy, as I said, we've got a meeting coming up the next, what, the eleven?
It's when I'm looking at it right now.
Eighteen.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah.
And we still, Aaron, did you get an answer back from mask about where our policies are? And you sent an email out to them?
I will send them for first we didn't know that much.
Oh.
So I will find out.
Yeah, let's find out where all these like A through G is, because it'd be great if we can actually get these sent back.
Because it won't change itself.
Well, there, yeah, there's a couple we need to update. Uh buildings and grounds. I'd like to get another meeting on the book soon so that we can actually review the presentation that was given so we can figure out what we gotta do next steps. So Aaron, if you can coordinate that with us, that would be great. Um I O T.
We believe our next meeting is the fifth, is that correct, Aaron?
It is.
Super. Well, this. We set your raise, Sped?
No.
No, technology.
No.
Advisory committee, we are, they are actually in the other room. I don't know why, they're still there. Uh but the advisory committee for the um for us, for the school committee started tonight. Um as we announced last night, there are seventeen members of that committee. I believe there were fifteen there today.
Mm-hmm.
Um so Pam and I were there at the beginning to introduce ourselves, kind of give them a little bit of a outline as to what we're looking for them to do. Um I mentioned to them that we were hoping to see if they could come back to us at least twice during the year. Um probably the first time right after New Year's, maybe the first meeting, Aaron, after the New Year. We'd like to get the the two representatives, whoever they decide to have. Uh and then again, at the end of the year, um they did, they did ask questions about what's their budget? Uh what's their, what's their, what kind of options? I'm like, well, let's see what your recommendations are first. So uh they did, uh they did, I kinda liked the question. I'm like, okay, I have no idea what you're looking to bring to the table, but yeah, let's see what.
They have ideas.
That's great, yeah.
So I'm I'm optimistic that they'll be able to provide us what we're looking for. Um capital committee, nothing till January. Athletics liaison, we probably need to meet at the end of, the end of the season, yeah, we do have. Okay, um yeah, legislative liaison, have we figured out who's going?
Sure.
Eric is going. Okay, good. Fantastic. All right. Now, public comment. Let's get public comment. Uh all right, so as I said earlier, we have fifteen minutes for public comment. Um ideally, three minutes a person. I am not gonna pull out the hook. If somebody wants to ramble for fifteen minutes, that's your fifteen minutes. Um but I'll start the clock and I'll let you know when it's over. First one I've got up is Rachel Knowles.
Who do I know?
Right to the little pony. So if you just wanna say a name and where you live, that's the two requirements and then off you go.
Excellent. Uh my name is Rachel Knowles. I am a teacher at the high school. I live in West Springfield, but I am the president of the Southwick Education Association. Uh we come here tonight to ask for a living wage for our paraprofessionals, uh the living wage that they deserve. Currently, the paras are working under an expired contract and what we are asking for is simple. Value the work they do with a living wage and continue having adequate amounts of sick days to allow them to take care of themselves and their families. Paras are crucial to the Southwick Talon Granville School Committee and the success of the schools. Their value is countless, their service is plenty. They serve as bus duty, being the first person to greet your child off the bus and the person making sure that they get on the right bus to go home. In class, they serve as note takers, assignment reminders and help and the help that students might need to fully understand the concept. They are the extra set of eyes to see if a child is having a difficult day, starting to fall apart, or they just need their shoe tied. It is well beyond time to honor the work that they do in the district. By almost two dollars an hour, Southwick Talon Granville has the lowest starting pay for paraprofessionals in the area. The level one paraprofessional that have dedicated their lives to this district with ten, twenty, or even thirty years assisting the students, teachers and the schools are making less than twenty dollars an hour, also the lowest in the area. Uh with other districts, ten, twenty, or even thirty minutes drive away, how can we attract and keep dedicated paraprofessionals? The answer is, we can't. Vacancies are all over the district, leaving students without the support they deserve. For example, in the past three years, I have had the honor of having two paraprofessionals in my history class. The paras were a helping hand, effectively doubling the amount of students that we could help lift up, lift up. Both of the paraprofessionals quit after their first paycheck. Their love of the students and the desire to stay was overcome with the desire to have a paycheck that allowed them to live. Their vacant positions were not filled. And it is way past time to show the pairs of the district the value of their work. So tonight you're gonna hear from others that are impacted by paraprofessionals in the classroom. Each of their message is clear. Paraprofessionals are a vital force in this district and they deserve to be valued as such. Thank you.
Well, I have is Erin Pearson. My name is Erin Pearson. So I'm an educator at Southwick Regional School and a parent of a student in the district. I was asked to speak on behalf of the district's teaching assistants. Thank you for your time. Our T A's are the elementary school hoodie, putty in the project we call education. We don't always think of them as vital supports in that project, but I can assure you that after two decades of working in this district, that our T A's are an absolutely fundamental part of district education. Like that school project putty, they are instrumental at filling in the gaps. Our teaching assistants are constantly act to change forms and adapt to teach students in all subjects. They fill in when other staff are sick. At times, I've seen them act as teachers, nurses, guidance counselors, student advocates, technical support staff, coaches and student cheerleaders. In short, they are the jack of all trades professionals of our district. Too often, we don't treat them like a required piece of our school project. But when it comes down to it, sometimes this project called education is literally being held together by the dedication and support and willingness of our teaching assistants to go above and beyond their job description to fill in the gaps and cracks of education. Like a school project, we often do not see the emerging cracks and flaws. And that is often because an invaluable, dedicated, competent and experienced teaching assistant filled it in before anybody noticed. The reason your child got an extra reminder to complete an assignment, a T A. The reason a behavior or discipline issue was brought to the attention of others, a T A. Your child's five oh four I E P plan being followed, not just with fidelity, but also integrity, a T A. The reason your child understands fractions, the water cycle, grammar, Article one of the United States Constitution, a T A. The staff member your child has the best and most positive relationship with is a very good chance it's one of our amazing T A's. I could continue listing the great things they do every day and the list of reasons why, after two decades as a teacher and now as a parent, I am so thankful for them. And this list would go on for a long, long time, but hopefully you get the point. Our T A's deserve the highest of marks for helping our shared educational project earn the outstanding grade that we all want to be proud of, the grade this district wants to take credit for. In short, the putty that makes this project we call education go from average to outstanding, it's often our T A's. Thank you.
Alicia Standish. All right, good evening, school committee members, excuse me, and Southwick community. My name is Alicia Standish and I currently live in Westfield. This is my eleventh year working at Southwick Regional School in the middle school wing as a special needs paraprofessional. Prior to working in these schools, I was a student. I was raised in this town since I was three and I wouldn't change it for the world. I graduated from Southwick in two thousand and seven and it was a privilege to come back here and work in two thousand and fourteen. Since then, I have enjoyed working with your seventh and eighth grade students as they enter the regional school. My primary job is to support students on I E Ps by carrying out their accommodations and modifications in their general education core classes. I have primarily worked in history classes as I hold a bachelor's degree from Westfield State University in history and education. Currently, with my education and experience, each week after health insurance and deductions, I only bring home two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. I have been, I haven't yet mentioned that I am happily a married mother of two. Without the support of my husband, I could never afford to live on my wage alone. During my eleven years in the district, I have worked alongside many single folks in my position, trying to make ends meet on this wage. It is impossible. If I were to walk into Westfield with my education and experience, I would begin at significantly more an hour. In addition, they offer much less expensive health insurance than Southwick. In addition, they offer much less expensive health insurance than Southwick and over two thousand dollars more in yearly, uh, salary stipends for longevity and educational degrees. This is only an example. Southwick is simply not competitive with the other local districts, which puts us at a severe disadvantage when hiring and retaining good parents. I love Southwick and working with your children. I want to continue doing this. I'm sure a lot of folks would love to come work in our small farm town, but can't due to the financial constraints. If things do not change, I will also have to consider other options. It won't matter how much I love this town. Thank you for your time.
Allison Wykender.
My name is Allison Wykender. I live in Barhamstead, Connecticut, but I've been a teacher at the high school for eighteen years. Twenty-five years ago, I started my career in education as a paraprofessional. Tonight, I'm here to advocate for the invaluable paraprofessionals who support our students every day. The Southwick Education Association demands a fair contract for our pairs and it's imperative that we recognize their critical contributions to our schools. First and foremost, pairs deserve and must receive a living wage as defined by MIT as the hourly rate that an individual in a household must earn to support themselves working full-time. These dedicated individuals play a crucial role in our classrooms, working side by side with teachers to create an inclusive learning environment. They support our students with diverse needs and contribute to the overall success of our educational programs. Yet, many of them struggle to make ends meet. If we subtract the cost of healthcare, the living wage in Hampden County, according to the MIT Living Wage Calculator, is nineteen dollars, eleven cents per hour. For those with district health insurance, the majority of their pay is spent on that insurance, which is not even included in MIT's calculations. Pairs deserve a wage that reflects their value, one that not only attracts newcomers, but also honors the experience that our long, long-serving pairs bring to the table. A fair contract must acknowledge that pairs deserve more than the minimum because our students deserve more than the minimum. Our pairs should not have to sacrifice sick days for the wage they deserve. Their well-being and ability to care for themselves and their families is essential to their effectiveness in our classrooms. When pairs are supported, our students benefit. Healthy and happy, happy staff members create a thriving learning environment. Finally, it's important to strive for parity with our peers in other districts. Our ability to attract and retain dedicated and talented pairs hinges on offering competitive compensation and benefits. If we want our students to get the support that is currently lacking in some classrooms, we must ensure that their contracts are on par with those in neighboring districts. This is not just about fairness. It's about providing the best possible support for our students who need that support right now. In closing, I urge this committee to stand with the SCA and help to provide a fair contract for our paraprofessionals. Their work directly impacts the success of every student in our district. It's time we honor their contributions with a living wage and the essential protection of adequate sick days. By doing so, we not only invest in our pairs, but also provide an equitable education for every student in our district. Thank you for your attention and for your commitment to making our schools a better place for everyone.
My Judy Bean.
Hi, everybody. I'm Judy Bean. I live in Westphal, but I've been a teacher at the regional school for eighteen years. Um, as a district, one of our main goals is to ensure that all students feel as though they belong. Paraprofessionals are integral in ensuring this happens for our students with disabilities. As a teacher, I wouldn't be able to do my job without the support of Paris. I'm not sure that people realize all the responsibilities they may have. They provide one-to-one as follow group instruction so that students can access their curriculum. They provide support with toileting, feeding and other personal care assistance for students with significant disabilities. They provide job coaching and community-based education. They know how to use and help students communicate using augmentative and alternative communication devices. They follow plans set by teachers and related service providers such as OT, PT, speech and behavior specialists. They often have additional training such as CPR, first aid and safety care. There is an expectation that pairs are computer savvy, not only to help students use assistive technology and to access the curriculum, which ensures our IEPs are being followed, but also to support students when they are completing assignments on Microsoft Teams, for example. Pairs also frequently substitute for teachers when subs are not available, allowing students to maintain their structure and routine. Many pairs support school, after-school activities such as sports and drama club, not only to make some extra money, but to keep consistency for students so that they can be meaningfully involved in their school community. Without paraprofessional support, without paraprofessional support, teachers would not be able to meet the needs of all students. We would not be able to ensure that all students are receiving their education in their least restrictive environment, which is federally mandated. We're asking a lot of paraprofessionals and I strongly feel their compensation should reflect that. Thank you.
Julian Davidson.
Dwayne Davidson. I live in Southwood. I am a parent of three students in the district, one of which is directly, um, serviced by the wonderful paraprofessionals that are in the district. I stand before you today to emphasize the vital role that paraprofessionals play in our educational system, particularly in substantially separate programs, as Mrs. Bean just described, which is where my daughter is currently being educated. These dedicated individuals are often the unsung heroes in our schools, providing essential support to our students with disabilities. It's time we recognize their contributions by advocating for equitable contracts that reflect their importance. Paraprofessionals are not just assistants. They are integral members of our educational teams. They work tirelessly to ensure that our students receive the personalized attention and guidance they need to thrive. They help facilitate learning, promote social skills and create a nurturing environment where every student can succeed. Their impact is profound, often making the difference between a student feeling supported and feeling isolated. And I just want to shout out to Ms. Bean and Ms. Penland that I got my daughter's MCAS results today. She's passed two out of three so far and she missed the third one by five points and they said, we're going to get her there. So I need.
Okay, we got a minute and a half left, but I'm going to let one more person go. Stephanie Rivera.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Rivera and I'm a paraprofessional in my seventh year at Willis School. I am married with three children, a senior, a junior and a freshman. Our eldest son plays soccer year round and our daughter competes in dance. And my middle son has autism. As a working-class family, we struggle to make ends meet. If you look at our district, you'll notice that teachers' specials, specialties, specials, speech therapists, occupational therapists, uh, physical therapists, substitutes, custodians, all earn two to three times more than we do. I am a level two paraprofessional and earn twenty-seven thousand a year. Many of my colleagues, especially level one pairs, make even less. How are we expected to provide for our families, given the state of the economy and our wages? As a level two para, I work with students on behavior plans, collect data, provide one-to-one instructional and assist in SEL in the autism room with classes. When classes are evacuated, I am often the one who stays behind to manage the situation. I have been hit, kicked, spit on, bitten and more, all for twenty-seven thousand a year. Why I love my job and the children I work with is becoming increasingly difficult to support my family. Many of us work second jobs or rely on programs like heating assistance, mass help, or EBT just to get by. I ask that you consider our situation carefully when making decisions regarding our compensation. Thank you for your time and attention, Stephanie Rivera.
All right. Well, that's our public comments for this evening. Um, I'm going to move on to old business. Any old business? New business? Budget round table. What date? I missed my piece of paper. Okay, yeah, so we've got the budget round table, November twenty-fifth, five-thirty, Powdermill School Library. Um, you got any comments on that?
Um, have we or will we reach out to, um, all three town selectmen and? Okay.
Yep. Everybody gets it.
Yeah. All right. So that's November twenty first.
Great. I am ready to entertain the motion maneuver. Can I get a show of hands with your meat? Aaron, with the record show, the motion passes five zero zero. Thank you very much, everybody, this evening.